Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Board of Commissioners regular meeting for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of our friendship and loving individual cultures.
Thank you. Moving on to the next items, approval of the regular meeting agenda.
So moved.
So have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seen on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to public input during this portion of our meeting. We welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on the agenda and the forms in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Paul Foreman. Good morning, Commissions. Did I get it?
There you go.
I feel like I'm whooping a dead horse. But I'm gonna stay with it because I think I can get him revived. It's about the side by sides on the members. And I don't quite understand things. But I feel like members people have been forgotten stepchildren before. The people that don't know what's going on, they divided the road. McKnight. And above, you can ride the side by sides. The community of members, you can't because Highway thirty-five is the only way to get through. I'm being told it's because of fifty-five mile an hour speed limit for about a mile and a half. I keep saying, if you're running under fifty-five mile an hour and car comes up behind you and you pull over right and let them by, you're not violating the law. These side by sides, you pay insurance on them just like a vehicle. I got a license plate on it says I can ride on paved roads. It's a permanent plate. Only one I have to register ever years, the permit to ride it in the Forest Service. I don't understand why I went through the problem of registering for paved roads and all that. And then get stopped and get a citation for it. I keep writing the same complaint. There's where they got the signs for you, you write it, that's private property, you can't park your vehicle there. You have to go to four miles. There's some roads going into the Forest Service. If I want to take my side by side, I have to load it up on trailer and haul it to it. There's no place to park. I just might as well go in my vehicle. I don't understand things. I don't know all the procedures in it. But it has to start somewhere. And I I'm just requesting the commissioners to look into this. Not just blow it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Simon Wheaton Smith. And I'm speaking in my capacity as a private citizen. Reason I'm here today is I was elected mayor of Silver City taking office on January the first. I have a lot to learn about the county. So I've been wanting to set up meetings with the chairman, Mr. Wonsay, and also the county manager, Charlene Webb. I also plan to meet with mayors of the surrounding towns in the county. And just by way of summary, my a little bit of my background. I'm currently Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has been very active the last two years, and I think we've been doing very good work. I was also on the town council for a couple of terms. And before that, I was also the town clerk. So this is my introduction to you, the commission and citizens of Grant County, and I look forward to serving in my capacity of mayor of Silver City starting January the first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Tureta, you have somebody behind you coming when I was coming up.
Hello. My name is Erica Mesker. I'm with Connect Humanity and I'm just here with my colleagues Callum and our technical partner Silas from Hawk Networks. And we're here just to introduce ourselves to you and our project. Some of you, we've called and emailed, so you may recognize our names. But basically, we're here to meet with the community. We've been here for the past week, meeting with business owners and community members, mostly in Pinos Altos, but also across Grant County, especially in Silver City, to understand the situation and experience with that people are having with regard to their internet connectivity and broadband. So speed, affordability, reliability, in an effort to bring hopefully more options at more affordable rates to community members, particularly in Pinos Altos. So my ask to you is if you have people you think we should meet with yourselves or community members, small business owners, please let us know. We have a flyer. This has information about our project. It has my name, my phone number, and my email address. And it also has a link to a survey that you can fill out or you can encourage your constituents to fill out. So if I can, leave it on the desk back there, I'd be grateful. Callum, say anything to add?
No, thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity.
Also, last thing. We're here for our fact finding mission right now to build trust and meet people. But we'll be back in twenty twenty-six with our draft plan. And we hope that at that time we can schedule an actual, you know, presentation here where we can interact and engage based on our findings. So we hope to see you again then. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, and I'm from Pinos Alto, so I'll be talking with you guys, all right? But no, it's exciting that we can do things like for PA, Pinos Altos here in Grant County. I just would like to spend a minute, if I may. There was a gentleman by the name of Harvey Salas that was born in a small mining town here in Baird. And I had the honor to really spend a lot of time with him, not only on the basketball court, but on the softball diamond. And here's the county commissioner. I just wanted to reiterate that what a wonderful human being Harvey was. And I just hope that the Daily Press will actually write an article about this gentleman because he was he was just an icon here in this community. He was elected as county, Grant County Commissioner. And he brought the approach about public service. He wasn't the kind of guy that actually sat behind the desk. He was out there talking to people. He really liked the small communities. He tried to do as much he can for the small communities. He worried about the road maintenance, housing, local infrastructure. And he believed on the progress and understanding the people affected of all these decisions that's happening here in Grant County. I just wanted to just bring up a few words about him because we did talk to him about about him on the radio show this morning at eight o'clock. And I said, you know myself, I said, I'm gonna go to the county commissioners' meeting so I can actually acknowledge Mr. Harvey Salas because not only that, he was not only a professional accounting commissioner, but he was a very, very true friend. And what an educated man he was. So I just thought I'd back that up there, Chris, because I know he was a really close friend of yours also. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay, moving on to proclamations, proclamation honoring Javier Harvey Salas. Ms. Mary Ray?
Whereas the county of Grant lost a valued member and leader on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the age of seventy-one with the passing of Javier Harvey Salas. Whereas the county of Grant celebrated Javier as a visionary leader and a generous soul, rich in knowledge. Mr. Salas served as a tireless and gentle advocate for all of the veterans and the American people, embodying the spirit of compassion and dedication. Whereas Javier was born on December seventeenth, nineteen fifty-three in Silver City, New Mexico, to his parents, Daniel and Felicitas Salas. Javier married Estela Ortiz. Together, they enjoyed fifty-three wonderful years of marriage and raised three wonderful children. Their family grew to include eleven adored grandchildren and two sweet granddaughters, great granddaughters. Javier dedicated his life to serving others, nurturing his faith, and cherishing his family. Whereas Javier proudly served his country with honor as an enlisted member of the United States Army. After his military service, he embarked on a meaningful career with the Texas New Mexico Power Company. His passion for mentoring inspired him to coach youth athletics, empowering countless young people through patience, encouragement, and heart. Whereas Javier's journey is a testament to the power of lifelong learning and the impact one individual can have on the lives of many. Graduating with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, an MBA, and a master's in counseling, his calling to uplift others led him to serve as a juvenile probation officer, counselor, diagnostician, child psychologist, and special education director. In each role, Javier approaches work with unwavering compassion, believing firmly in the potential of every student and family he encountered. Whereas Javier served his community as a Grant County Commissioner from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, then in twenty twenty-three was appointed to the Hila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, where he served until his passing. His fairness, humility, and integrity of the Grant County community serve as an inspiration to us all. And whereas the Grant County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize Mr. Javier Harvey Salas for his immense contributions through his gracious demeanor, he enriched the lives of everyone fortunate enough to know him and work alongside him. Therefore, the Board of Grant County Commissioners hereby issues this proclamation to honor the memory of Javier Harvey Salas as a great leader in the Grant County community.
Thank you. Like to make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
So have a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? You know, what I like to say in two thousand, well, probably more two thousand eighteen, I got to know Commissioner Salas a little bit better as we ran together for our first term and you know, one thing that I can tell you about Commissioner Salas was that in his heart was his community, the mining district. The things that he did for the mining district. He was one of the biggest advocates for Baton Park to make sure that the mining district had something for the kids and for the adults to go and enjoy. And I know one of his goals was to have a fiesta. And I know we attended several meetings with Freeport trying to bring Mining Days back into that area and into the mining district. Mr. Salas was not the type. People, I guess in the public, don't see a lot of what some commissioners, Mr. Salas was one of them, or Commissioner Salas was one of them. Wasn't about putting out there what he's done, what he did, pounding his chest, patting his back. He would do what he needed to do for the community, for his district, and leave it at that. He was very humble and he did a lot of great things for that area, not only just for his district, but for Grant County. He was there. You know, me and Commissioner Salas, I think we served on the Board of Trustees for Hila Regional. When Hila Regional was about to close, I believe, had a couple of days, three days with the other the other three commissioners. We spent a lot of time together. His biggest thing was making sure that that hospital did not fail for Grant County because without that hospital, we'd lose a lot. And the approach that was taken, if you really look at Grant County, if Western New Mexico University fails, Grant County is gonna fail and other businesses fail. Especially if our hospital fails. That is gonna impact not only the Western, it's gonna impact Freeport. It's gonna impact a lot. It's gonna impact our citizens. And and he fought very hard. And we sat there for days and days, two, three meetings a week, trying to get that hospital under. And he was very passionate. He was he was a very intelligent individual and knew how to approach things. He worked hard. And at the end of the day, he made that hospital succeed. And a lot of part that we do have Hila Regional right now is because of Commissioner Salas. People don't understand that. People don't see that. People don't see what we do behind closed doors, the meetings we have with people. Mr. Salas, and I'm not gonna get into, but his where it came from, but one of his previous employers, and this really drove Commissioner Salas, was for equality for all the employees in the county. He would tell me stories about at one place of employment that he had where he saw that things weren't very equal to everybody. His passion, when he came up here and sat next to me and even at the Board of Trustees, was making sure that employees had equality, making sure that employees had livable wages. And he was very strong. And he took an approach, an intelligent approach to look at all this, to make sure that our county employees got wages that they deserved. And he worked on it and he looked at it and and we got some raises going because of him. On the other side of it is sometimes he'd come up to me and he'd tell me, God, I can't believe you said that in the meeting. Well, I did what I did. He would keep me in check. He was like my mentor in a way, telling me, you know what? And sometimes, you know, I'd look at him and I'd mess with it and say, I can't believe you said that. Well, you know, we need, yeah, I know, that's why I say things sometimes too. He was very good. And I don't understand a lot of what public, but if you know or even follow politics in the state level, we had, you know, you'd always hear, you know, Bo Ring there in Santa Fe Restaurant. They said a lot of decisions are made in that establishment. You know, senators, representatives frequent that, eat there. And Commissioner Salas had been up there a few times and his lovely wife to eat dinner during the sessions and you know, but me and Commissioner Salas, and I'm not gonna mention the restaurant because I don't want it to sound like like a commercial here, but we would go to a restaurant. He'd always order a bowl of abon digas, two cups of rice, lime. And he'd sit there, we'd eat, we'd discuss a lot of things. So, you know, maybe between me and him, a lot of decisions were made at that restaurant, just like it happens in Santa Fe. He would call me and say, Chris, you know, we need to look at this, we need to look at that. But at the end of the day, I'm not gonna go on a lot, but I could tell you hundreds of things that that me and Commissioner Salas discussed, went through and tried to do for for a community. At the end of the day, the only thing in his heart was his community, his district, and the biggest part is his family, his lovely wife. You know, he'd have conversations with me about his family, his, you know, certain things. And, you know, I respected that. You know, he had a lot of respect for my wife and treated her with the utmost respect and sometimes would joke with her and do that. And I think maybe the reason we got, we were born on the same day, December seventeenth. And, you know, I miss him up here. Miss the conversations I've had with him. Miss what we try to do. And then there's some things that I still need to finish and accomplish hopefully in the next year because I'm done after next year that Mr. Salas had asked. So to his family, my heart goes out to you. Guys had an awesome man, tremendous man. You know, the work he did for our kids, for the schools was above anything else. And I appreciate his beautiful wife there lending him to us for four years. And for all the meetings and the long hours we put in for Hila Regional, him being away from his family, but that's the type of man he was, he was gonna help others. And I thank you. And I know that this is not does not do justice for the type of man he was, but we are trying. One of the things that I'm gonna say, one of the things that I asked our county manager, I said, hey, we need to do a little bit more than than trying to do just a proclamation for him because he put a lot of time into into his job here with us and with the hospital. She came up with an idea that we would do a bench and I love that idea. Put that in Baton Park for him and do that. You know, one thank you, I want to thank our CEO, Mr. Whitaker, for helping the family for the reception that they, him and his staff did. I appreciate all that, that they did that. And thank you and for, you know, this commission coming together at a time of loss to all of us. So I thank you all and I thank you, Ms. Salas, for lending us your husband for that time and for us keeping him away from you for so long to get things done. I appreciate that. And whatever I can ever help you or any of the family, please don't hesitate to let me know. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? Thank you. If you guys want to come up and we'll give you the certificate. Well, did we vote? We didn't vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to presentations, years of service recognition, or ten years. Who's gonna do this one? Joseph?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. This morning, we're here to recognize and celebrate two outstanding individuals for their dedicated service to the county at the Detention Center. They are both great assets to the facility and we couldn't do without them. Starting with the fifteen-year pin and fifteen-year celebration and recognition, we have Officer Sam Ogas. Sam? Sam Ogas is celebrating fifteen years of service at the Detention Center. He came from us, he came to us from Arizona. He has prior experience with the Department of Corrections in Arizona. Officer Ogas is something that a lot of facilities desperately need. With his years of service, his knowledge and his experience, Sam is a dedicated officer and he's always there when needed to fill him when needed. He mentors all our young staff, our new recruits, and also our supervisors. I really like, we really enjoy having Sam and he's there for us all the time and we couldn't do without him. So Sam, congratulations for your fifteen years.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to recognize Lieutenant Michael Bonifant. Lieutenant Bonifant's been here ten years. He came to Grant County from Doniana County, we had six years prior service. And also, he was a proud member of the United States Military, he served the United States Navy. Bonifant came to us as a lieutenant back ten years ago, and then he moved up to Lieutenant of Administration. And as you know, Lieutenant Bonifant is the second in charge and he's become a dedicated person running, helped run the facility. He's also the administrator oversight for the SRT team, for the RISE program, for programs at the facility, and also for the accreditation program. We worked together for the past ten years and we've really become close and we became good team members and worked together well. And when I'm away, he always takes care of the facility. And I think he's on his way to becoming better than me and moving the facility forward. We couldn't do without you, Mike.
Congratulations. Thank you. Moving on to next item, the Hila Regional Medical Center report. CEO, Mr. Robert Whitaker, November update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. Also, I thank you for the comments about Hila Regional and Mr. Salas as well. I know we wouldn't be here today in the reports that I give and how we're doing without the work of Commissioner Salas and the commission. So thank you. For the month of September, volumes were generally across the board, lower in September. We had lower emissions, lower deliveries, lower ER visits. The one thing that we continue to see more more patients through and with is with our outpatient services, lab, radiology, cardiopulmonary, physical therapy, things like that. Year to date, we are above prior year year to date. And so our facility and our health system continue to continue to grow. With with that, all right, let's see here. Financials for the month of September. We recorded nine point two million total operating revenue with an annual report with CMS that that we have to turn in and file. This is a critical document filing we have to do, it affects our our financial audit, and would like to report to the Commission, we we have completed our financial audit, it was submitted to OSA last week, and we should hopefully hear back from them soon on that. But I just want to report on on the timeliness of of those reports and filings being made. I do want to thank everyone who who in our community who supported our foundation with the fundraiser, it was a wonderful event, and we we need to find a bigger space, so I'm grateful that it was it was well-attended. We've had some good community events with, most recently with W N M U and our HeLa Regional Appreciation Day, spent some time on in Radio Spot talking about the hospital and healthcare, and yesterday had a community chat with the Silver City Museum. I would like to report that our urology clinic is up and going, Dr. Swazuski, glad to glad to have him, it was a big, a big project for us and a big commitment from the very beginning of when I when I came in, of looking for gaps in services that we can provide, and and urology was one of them, and and we pushed hard and did a lot of work and that was up and going. And we'll kind of get this clinic settled out here, we'll we'll look at other services that we can continue to explore and expand and and provide. Our HVAC project I've got on here, finished next week, but it's actually finished up a little early, so we're 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 open with those two OR rooms. I also want to report out year-to-date, in the first three months, we've continued to progress with our our capital budget and capital plan, we've expended just over a million dollars in the first three months with capital expenditures. And then we're in the middle of our open enrollment and and we've made some improvements to our employee health benefits and some decreased decreased costs in some areas and better coverage in 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 some areas as well, and we're we're always looking for ways that that we can recruit and retain and and provide for our caregivers and staff. And and finally, we have a strategic planning process underway with with our advisory company and and look to have that kind of finished up February, March timeframe. That's my report for this month, and stand for questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving on to next item on the agenda is elected official reports. Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to report that currently my office is participating in the no shave November, December months. What this campaign does is it actually the deputies that would like to grow a beard for the month of November and December, they have to do a donation to our our program that we are initiating, where we're gathering funds to do turkey baskets, food to give to families that could use a good meal for the holiday. So I do have, in case you do see the deputies out there with a beard, that's the reason for for November and December, and, you know, if anybody in the community would like to assist with the donation to help us to give as many as we can to our community, that would be great. They can bring by the donation to the Sheriff's Office and we'd be happy to mention them and as well as when we do our release on that. The other thing I did want to report is tonight, we are having our DARE graduation for the Cobra District. I'd like to invite you, Commissioners, if you guys would like to go and attend and see what the graduation entails with these students and how they are recognized and and possibly hear their speeches that they give when they give out the awards to them. Other than that, I just want to thank my staff for everything that they're continuing to do. You know, currently, we are shorthanded and they are picking up the the slack with handling calls and doing the the best service that they can for our community, so I do want to thank them and acknowledge them for everything that they do day in and day out. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Sheriff, what time of work?
The DARE graduation is tonight at six o'clock at the Cobra High Auditorium.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. So all our elected officials, moving on to county reports. We had some that had other commitments, so I'm gonna skip over some of them, but they're not here, but move on to the Detention Center, Mr. Andesola.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm happy to announce that currently we are fully staffed in our security operations at the facility. We do have four officers in training that'll be training throughout the year, probably graduate toward the end of the year, and we'll be fully staffed as far as the Detention Center is concerned. We'll be conducting new interviews actually this afternoon for a new PED specialist for presumptive eligibility to make sure that the detainees have their insurances activated before they leave the facility. It is quite difficult to get that certification to activate the insurances, so we are gonna be doing those interviews this afternoon. On November fourth of twenty twenty-five, our population was ninety-seven detainees, with sixty-seven males, twenty-two females, and eight males housed in Haldago. We will be bringing those Haldago inmates back to the facility either at the end of this week or by the end of next week. In October of twenty-five, there were ninety-seven intakes and ninety-three releases. Our average daily population for October was eighty-one, our highest was ninety-eight, and our lowest eighty-one. We did conduct a flu clinic at the facility on Monday, November third, two thousand twenty-five, for all detainees, staff, and contractors. Our RISE program in October had twenty-two RISE participants with nine in the facility and thirteen in the community. Our projects, we are currently looking at beginning our laundry room project with maintenance and also some contractors. We're also looking at probably beginning of next year, doing the male enclosure project. We also have on the agenda today, the upgrade on the PLC controls. The PLC controls are the different controls within the facility, which is master control, female control, which acts as a backup to master control, and then male control, where they have the touchscreen boards attached to the cameras and the speakers to talk to cell, to talk to the gates for law enforcement. We're gonna upgrade those and put new monitors in, and most importantly, start new programming. We did upgrade back in two thousand sixteen with another company, but now Apex is gonna redo the programming on those PLC controls, so it'll be Apex programming, and that will be easier to maintain and take care of any issues that arise. Also, we're looking at our Hustle two-point-oh program, beginning of, end of November, beginning of December. That's a program for the detainees that can attend programming within the facility that are on certain lockdown statuses or in the cells, whether they be severely mentally ill or serving disciplinary sanctions for picking up reports. Also, an accreditation update, we're continuing to review and revise our policies, and actually we've asked for assistance from Doniana County, they're gonna come a week in December and make sure that we're updating our power DMS with our standards of proofs and help make sure we're doing that right and highlighting the portions that need to be highlighted so we could stay on track for our audit coming next year. Our plan is to have the power DMS updated and turned in by January, mid-January, maybe by the legislative session, so that gives them February to review and then have our actual audit on ground at the facility beginning of March. We did talk to the accreditation council and ask for an extension. As being a member of the accreditation board, oftentimes it's the new facilities, especially the ones in their first year, often have findings on the audit in the facility, so we do need to find remedies for that audit, so we're asking for a tenth extension, that way we can meet those findings with with our remedies. Also, the individual that was one of the main auditors for the for the council that was helping us with our program, he retired in August, and also Jessica Taylor, who runs the accreditation program, she was the director, she left at the end of last month, so I know the association is looking for a new director, new auditors, so that gives them time to hire someone else, put them in place, and also organize their auditors. I will continue to keep giving updates on the commission and our progress and any changes that happens to the accreditation program from the Mexico counties. Key event dates, we're having our second annual RISE Thanksgiving Celebration next Thursday, November twentieth at noon, at the Grant County Cooperative Extension Services, right next to the RISE offices, which is behind Dispatch. I'd like to invite all county staff and commission to attend that. We had our first annual celebration last year and celebrating the RISE participants' graduation, celebrating Thanksgiving and their continued recovery with their families, and it turned out to really be a great celebration, so we do invite you again this year. As we continue to update our five-year plan for twenty-six, twenty-seven, I have been meeting with the county manager, and I will start meeting with HR, we're looking at restructuring the administration and operations at the Detention Center, so I'm looking at putting on a presentation of that next month at the commission meeting. Open for any questions?
Thank you. You know, just to let you know, I really appreciate the work that you guys have been doing, and I know it's time-consuming. A lot of people don't realize what it takes to become accredited, and and, you know, what you're saying is true, you know, the first few months are gonna be a little rough till we figure things out, but I really appreciate that you haven't let it go and that you're continuing to to follow that, and appreciate all the work that you and your staff have done done on that. With that being said, I'd like to see that here, coming soon, we have our our legislative session coming up, and I know since we have the Detention Reimbursement Fund, you have the Detention Recruitment and Detention Recruitment and Retention also coming up, and we have the RISE funding. I'd like to see, because I know I'll be asked in Santa Fe, maybe even sooner, what our cost is, I know you did it before for me, what our cost is to house each inmate, what it's costing us daily, average of the number of inmates there, what it costs us a year, because it's getting to the point of, you know, we have a detention center, and I think what our budget ensures, what, four, four point four million, somewhere in there, to for the detention center. We have other law enforcement agencies that aren't providing, helping us with this, so we really have to get in there and push for the Detention Reimbursement Fund and everything that's there. And I think having that and being able to show legislators, show the people what we're spending on each inmate and all their mandates, I think will just help us for this cause. I'd really appreciate if you do that again.
Thank you, Chairman, yes, I will prepare that for you. Also, on the five-year plan that that we're gonna look at is increasing the costs because the costs have increased, so we'll probably be working with the county manager and the attorney and getting those contracts with the different municipalities and raising that cost per day.
Also, the other question I have, is it getting any better? I know that some inmates have been sentenced, has it getting any, is it getting any better and quicker to get them out of here, that the state come in or we transport them to, you know, the correctional facilities, because I don't like somebody being sentenced and we're paying another three months because nobody picks them up? So I don't know if that's getting any better or not.
Chairman, yes, it has gotten a lot better, and actually Lieutenant Bonifant came with the idea to pull up Sergeant Ganader to audit all the files and audit the jail tracker or jail management system, and the courts get delivered that pick every morning, so with Sergeant Ganader updating the files and the pick, the courts are able to keep on top of that and schedule the court cases faster, so we do see the turnaround happening a lot faster with those changes, and also Sergeant Ganader is teaching our younger staff how to keep track and keep those files files audited and keep that jail tracker updated so that courts could have their court cases when they transfer to district court, but yes, the cases have been moving faster, they've been sending a lot of detainees to rehab and to prison, they've been giving a lot of lengthy prison sentences, so it is moving and our population is is decreasing.
Okay, I mean, what I'd really like to see, once they're sentenced, starting the next day, that the state start paying for them, but I don't know if that's legal or not, or if I'm gonna open up another cannon, and I know our attorney's looking at me like, whatever, but, you know, I'd really like to see that, because, yeah, it's it's hurting our county and it's it's hurting what we're able to do because of that big budget, but thank you. You guys have any questions, Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Moving on to our emergency manager, Mr. Scott.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, so we'll give you a brief update on some of the current projects I'm working on, didn't change much from last month, but I'll give you a couple of updates on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, that's moving forward, and we'll have our second planning team meeting and public meeting on January twenty-second, and the focus of that meeting will be on risk assessment for the community. H2O Partners went out and did a boots-on evaluation of forty-eight different communities in the county, and they will be providing the results of that risk assessment at the January meetings, the planning meeting and the public meeting that night, and accepting input from the public. On the emergency operations plan, we did get, the county was, the Freeport did provide us the sixty thousand funding to update the emergency operations plan, and with that in mind, it'll be a modern emergency operations plan, and part of that will be a recovery plan, an evacuation plan, a donation management plan, and a distribution management plan, so be a lot of, a lot of things in this that we don't currently have. On my, on the future projects, what I'm working on, everything's done for the Signal Peak Communication Site, the equipment's been ordered, just waiting to get that in. I'm hoping to get that up before the snow gets on top of Signal Peak and we can't get back up there, so I'm gonna put the county fire up there and hopefully and have the sheriff's repeater up there, so we'll have two sets, we'll have a redundant communication site, and I'm hoping when we get the the site up at Signal Peak, we'll have much better communications fire-wise in the county, I think that's a much better site than the lower PH at nine thousand feet, so that'll be great. And on on top of that, we we're setting up, the equipment's being ordered for the state side of Glenwood Brushy, just upside, just in Katrin County, and we're gonna be setting up a communication site there and link back to Cliff and back to here. That way, that part of the county up that northern has always been kind of a communications gap up there. With this coming in place, we'll have communications all throughout the county, the whole area up there all have good communications with that being brought online. And that's it, I'm open for any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Nope, sure? Okay, thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to next report, beyond Finance Director, Ms. Montoya.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, pretty short for you. Today, we are preparing the ClearGov, we just went through our Tyler conversion, now we have to change all those chart of accounts for the budget season, so we're preparing for that, so we'll start on the budget process again in January, so we're ahead of the game. We're currently working on updating our finance policies and procedure manual. Our new procurement officer just received her Chief Procurement Officer certification this month. Betty and Francine attended the Grant Plant Training in Albuquerque, it's an excellent training for federal, state, and local grants, from writing to administration and closeout and all the processes, is very happy for them, that's a great training. And our Amplifund grant program is up and running, and we are currently working with it, so we hope that everything's going to be streamlined very quickly, and I'm excited for that program. We had our auditor on-site September twenty-ninth, we are on track to have our audit submitted to OSA, the State Auditor's Office, on December second, so we no longer have a late audit, and that was in conjunction with the hospital as well, since they're on time, we're looking good to be on time. And we are at the final completion of our Tyler reset, Tyler has a CPA that will go through our system, it's called an ACFOR, where they go through the annual financial comprehensive review to make sure everything looks good.
Pretty short for you today, we're preparing the ClearGov. We just went through our Tyler conversion, now we have to change all those chart of accounts for the budget season, so we're preparing for that, so we'll start on the uh budget process again in January, so we're ahead of the game. Um, we're currently working on updating our finance policies and procedure manual. Our new procurement officer just received her Chief Procurement Officer certification this month. Um, Betty and Francine attended the grant plant training in Albuquerque, it's an excellent training for federal, state, and local grants from writing to administration and closeout and all the processes, is very happy for them, that's a great training. And our Amplifund grant program is up and running, and we are currently working with it, so we hope that everything's going to be streamlined very quickly and I'm excited for that program. We had our auditor on site September twenty-ninth. We are on track to have our audit submitted to O S A, the State Auditor's Office, on December second, so we no longer have a late audit. Um, and that was in conjunction with the hospital as well, since they're on time, we're looking good to be on time. And we are at the final completion of our Tyler reset. Tyler has a C P A that will go through our system, it's called an ACF, um where they go through the annual financial com- comprehensive review to make sure everything looks good on the C P A side of it all. And then we'll be done with our Tyler reset that has been going on for two, almost two years, so I'm happy with that. And we'll start the budget process again in January, get prepared and training for all new department heads, so it'll be a smooth transition. We will start the annual inventory process, we're gonna do it in-house with our new staff, we won't be contracting that out. Um, and then I'm starting the records and retention policy, not a policy, but we'll start um training department heads and stuff, because we have a massive amount of old, old, old items that we're gonna start trying to clean up the back rooms and getting it all taken care of, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Just seemed like we just went through the budget process and audits, here we go. Moving on to our I T director, Ms. Baca.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Some current projects that we've been working on are replacing wireless access points over at our detention center. There's some wireless access points that have been there for several years and they're due a refresh, it's simply time to just upgrade the hardware and provide better better capabilities within uh the wireless presence there. Uh, the laptops, phones, tablets, they all can connect on a certain mode on wireless, and we need to make sure that our wireless access points keep up with that as well. So we're slowly working on that, we're working in tandem with maintenance on that. As there's a lot of areas that we need a scissor lift in order just to get up to the uh access, the wireless access points themselves and literally swap them out. Uh, so other things we've been working on simultaneously are our Microsoft Office three sixty-five migration. There's been a lot of background work, simply getting to the point where we can start migrating our existing accounts within our Google workspace, so it's taking a bit. There's a little coordination between the vendor we selected, engineers that they have in place, and then, of course, coordinating with Microsoft on setting up our new environment for uh our email platform and other tools that we'll be utilizing, such as OneDrive for file shares and file retention, things along those lines, so it's in the works, and slowly but surely, it's coming along, and here very soon, we'll get to the point where we can actually start migrating our existing data into the new environment, so I'll keep you posted on that one. We're also working on upgrading our backup environment to an enterprise le- level backup environment. So the new backup environment that we have, we worked on upgrading it yesterday, and getting it to the latest software, the physical server that's literally in the server room. This uh server here has greater security methods that we can leverage, and it also has at least triple the amount of space that we currently have. So we can have greater retention periods for the backups we run on our server environment, and of course, the typical day-to-day files that we use, so we're definitely looking forward to having that as one of the tools that we use on the backend and having that as a safeguard for us. Other than that, we're working on upgrading security cameras within this building and increasing that presence as well. And aside from that, as far as things in the future that we're looking at considering, our device policy implementations via our antivirus solution. I've mentioned this one before, but I've had to place it on the back burner for a bit, and it's basically a policy that allows us to monitor and decide what happens when somebody plugs in a U S B drive, for example, into a computer, whether we allow the computer to see it or whether we stop that, or something along those lines is uh something that we can implement in the future. And then, of course, finishing our uh server virtualization effort, that's another thing that we've kinda had to place on the back burner. We only have two more servers that we have to virtualize, and then we can get rid of old hardware that's uh not able to be maintained any longer. So we'll get there slowly but surely on that one, it's not extremely pressing, but we know that we can progress with that as we find a little bit of room to do so. So that's uh basically what we've been up to within the I T department, so I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Question?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to next one is Planning and Capital Projects Director, Mr. Joseph.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just want to share that we hit a major milestone, Ridge Road is under construction. Um, from this point forward, our road director, Mike Rock, will be the one providing the updates on that. Um, however, I will remain engaged and maintain and oversee the budget part of that, so we'll be working collaboratively on that one. For Little Walnut and Arenas Valley, uh, we received a list of right-of-way easement conflicts. There are several conflicts that need resolution along both both of those roadways. Um, I'll be working uh with the landowners uh to formalize and document our right-of-way, so we can proceed and move into construction on those. Um, drawings for the public safety building are are complete, as I mentioned previously, um, an update for that is that the survey has been completed, and now we're working on integrating those uh civil engineering sheets into that package set of drawings, so we'll have those on our hands shortly. Um, the Franks and Crum Road drawings will be turned in by the close of business tomorrow, and over the next month, I'll be working with finance to to close out these projects uh with New Mexico Finance Authority. Um, our Hila Community Center drawings are seventy-five percent complete. Um, I'll verify with our architect, but I feel very confident we can have uh that package set of drawings completed by the end of the year. Um, for the Dos Gregos Fire Station, I received an architectural estimate. Um, I've sent them a couple of questions and I'm waiting for responses, once I have clarification on that. Um, I can provide a more detailed response to to our commissioners um about what it's gonna cost to construct that facility and uh and if it makes sense to move forward with that, so. Do that. Um, a couple of key dates, um, for October fifteenth, just uh this one did happen already, but Southwest COG hosted a Capitol Outlay Workshop, Priscilla put on a very informative uh session there. Representative Terrazas was in the house and gave some insight for some things to look forward this legislative session. Um, I've been coordinating with Manager Webb. Tomorrow, uh, November fourteenth, um, our packet to the prospectors is due. Um, and so I'm just putting the final touches on it. And then on December fourth, um, just a reminder, we have a legislative forum at W N M U Light Hall Auditorium. Um, this is where Manager Webb and myself will be presenting these projects to our legislators. And it's really that forum that allows some some Q and A on those, and so they wanna know why we put those projects in front of them, what supporting documentation we have behind that. And then uh, and that way, they're well informed going into that legislative session, and hopefully reduces the amount of questions later on, and they can make informed decisions. And then lastly, of course, uh, Grant County Days at the Roundhouse on January, January twenty-eighth. Um, and my apologies, I didn't get an opportunity to place this on there on my uh my directory report. But I'm asking for support for Resolution uh R twenty-five sixty-six. Uh, this is the Colonialist Fund uh to continue and complete the road improvement projects on Arenas Valley. Uh, we're already working on the first half of that project, as I reported on earlier. This will pick up where that funding stopped, and this will allow us to take that uh that road and complete it, so basically, it makes that entire loop from where the Misa Migos meets one eighty, loops back around, and then is basically by the Arenas Valley Animal Clinic, so it'll do that whole back section there. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Just I guess I wanna on the Dos Gregos, the fire department. We voted, I don't know what we voted on, but we voted prior to this. If these costs don't come in, because I'm struggling now with with how I voted, that I voted. Um, if these costs don't come in reasonably, can we go back and undo what the previous commission did? Or how does that work, or or should this not be somebody?
So we have been discussing all options, and um once hopefully next month, we can put it in front of you um as to how you wish to proceed with that, so back in twenty-one, twenty-two, the process began in twenty-one, you voted on it in twenty-two to obtain an N M F A loan to construct um the building. Um, at the time, the architectural estimates, um, I don't believe were accurate to the environment that we're in. Um, we're very short on um the funding doesn't match the architectural architectural estimates, so we're trying to fine-tune that. And then we'll put it in front of you, so you can make a decision whether or not you want to move forward with that, where we would like to obtain the additional funding to construct it, if you wish to do that. Um, I have also had a preliminary conversation with um the representative from N M F A that I um deal with about reverting that loan altogether and going back to the drawing board. And that's a little bit unheard of, but we're we're paying for a loan and I've been unable to move forward with the construction of this fire station, so that's where we're at, and we'll have more information, um, hoping that we can put this in front of you for action next month, at the latest in January.
No, I think you guys, you know, and probably for the public, I owe them an explanation. If we have a fire department in that area, it's one way in, one way out. If it's manned twenty-four hours a day, if we have people in there, I have no problem with that fire department. You know, anything we can fight from the inside out and from the outside in. What I have a problem with is we have a fire department that's sitting down there, if it's not manned, and we can't get to it. You know, there we have equipment, you know, thousands of dollars of equipment. I I'm just not seeing how how it's gonna be feasible for us. Um, fire departments, volunteer fire departments sometimes struggle to get volunteers, so and and I'm just saying this for the public, so they understand where I'm coming from, it's not that I'm against the fire department or volunteer fire departments are putting things in there to help the public. It's just the logistics of it and everything else that goes with it that I'm struggling with, but I thank you for the time and and everything you guys have put into that. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Horni?
What for the manager? So were the prices that far off each other of what we voted on to what the when we did the, when we did the vote, it seemed that the price was low anyways, that's what's kind of odd.
So you obtained a million dollar loan, um, spent a significant amount of money on architectural, um uh, the building that was designed at the time was to meet the H O A requirements, which um we've with Ben's assistants have later determined that was not necessary, we've gone back, pushed it back to a standard metal building with the standard requirements that um the State Fire Marshal's Office requires. Um, we do have to build it um in compliance with what they require for um the station, and we're several hundred thousand dollars short. More than that, more like half a million short. Uh, we're talking about a significant amount of money that you're gonna have to consider whether or not you want to supplement to build this or not, and so, yes, the estimates, in my opinion, um, the work that was done when the um application was submitted were, I I, that arch- that architect missed the ball, I have to say it, um, and um then when the C D started coming in on the preliminary estimates, it just, the project kept growing, the cost kept growing, and we learned very quickly that the loan was not gonna be uh enough to to build the station, and we're even finding now with the cost of even trying to construct the metal building, we're we're far short on, um the site um requires a lot of work as well, um, so that's the other thing that I don't think um many people take into consideration is it's not a ready-to-build pad, there's a lot of site work that also has to be done with this that was not taken into consideration.
Can you remind me what the status for the property was, was it donated, is that?
It's a, it was a piece that was carved out in that um subdivision specifically for a fire station. Um, that happens when we um approve subdivisions, there's usually a lot that's left vacant. Um, and most always, it's a not very desirable lot that you're probably gonna have a hard time selling that is carved out for either green space or fire station, E M S, um so that's how we ended up with that.
So I understand Chairman Pontes' comments, and I appreciate him, that that he's absolutely right, one way out, one way out. Um it's a very high-risk area, um, it's in your district? It's a very high-risk area, and and I'm not even putting value on homes, I'm just talking about value of lives and and that area, and and they need some type of protection back there, they do, that that when when all my years with Silver Fire, that was one of the the topic, anytime they talked about wildland fires, structural fires, that was the area they talked about because of the higher risk of either something coming over from P A or something starting in in the northern part of Silver and taking that area. Um, I think that we owe the people the opportunity to make sure that we can get them some type of protection up there, because I mean, there, like like Chairman Pontes says, there is a chance that they may not get here from up there, but if we've got one or two firefighters up there that can actually serve the area or can get some equipment going to get some other people in there, I just I I thought it was a really good idea at the time, and and now that we're falling financially short, I just think that we need to see what our options are possible.
And the other thing that Roger and I have been working with the fire chief is you've you've gotta give us a definitive answer whether or not you can stop it, um. Um, I'm not sure that there is anyone to stop it, so that those those are some other concerns about, you know, it was if you build it, they will come sort of scenario, I think is how it was presented, um, wasn't here for that portion, but um that's truly not the case, and um we just need to make sure that we have members that can be there, and um that's the other concern.
The other component is the equipment, can they equip it? Because they're gonna, they're gonna need a Class A engine, they're gonna need a brush truck, they're gonna need some pretty significant equipment.
And he has demonstrated that he can equip it, he that he has enough equipment, um, it's just having volunteers. So we're still, Roger and I are still having that conversation with him, just to make sure as we move forward with this process that we have someone to, that, you know, we have someone to res- that's able to respond from that station.
Okay, just last question, so I know these fire departments get funding for services, and I know like with us, you have to be so many miles apart, does P A get um financial support from the state for each main and substation, would that be considered a main, a sub? And are they gonna get an annual increase or an annual amount of money coming in where they can make that that payment to the D F A where the county goes out to pay it?
So um that is, that is the money that was pledged um for this is, um, so what happens is when you um when you have an N M F A loan that is supported by State Fire Marshals, um, State Fire Marshal um funding, it's intercepted, so they intercept the loan payment from that amount of, um, from their um annual allotment. So they're paying for that now, um, in hopes that, yes, when they receive the main station funding, that it would offset that. So right now, they're making a payment on a station that does not exist.
Does not exist.
And it is designed to be a main station.
I just wanna make sure the loan payment's not fifty thousand and they only get forty thousand and and.
No, the the main station funding would be enough um to offset that. But we're not there yet.
There's a lot to look at, Commissioner Pontes says there's a lot to look at. Thank you.
I just have one follow-up question, Mr. Chairman and Joseph. Does the architectural study include uh improvement for the access that uh my fellow commissioners have raised?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner, so at this point, it does not address access, it only addresses uh the facility on that site, the donated lot for that, or the designated lot for that, so that that would still be a concern at the end, even if we pursued it forward, and in the perfect world, we had all the ample funding to build the facility and outfit it, and have we had people that still doesn't resolve that one way in, one way, one way out with that.
Commissioner.
So again, I just wanna check my understanding, um, that I think the community wanted this fire station because they're worried that there's only one way in and one way out, and they have high fire risk. Right? That's the whole point. So that's why they wanted it, but it's ironic that that very issue makes it challenging for our fire station because there's only one way in and one way out to access it. So it's only useful if we have someone there, because if we don't, then people can't get to it. So that's where the volunteers come in, and so you're working with the fire chief to try to uh rally enthusiasm among the volunteers to make a commitment that, yes, we will always have someone there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Riden.
So Joseph, have they ever looked at the plans or the possibility of an access point through the backside through Little Walnut? Or anything like that from an emergency access point, because I didn't even take into consideration until the county manager made the point, even from an E M S standpoint, if people are trying to get their animals out. If people are trying to get their animals out of there and we're trying to get an ambulance up there or a fire truck up there, it's gonna be pretty difficult to, to get a truck up there when everyone's coming down. And, and it was either hurt or injured, we, we're gonna have to figure out something. That's what I was looking, is there any way we can look at an access point, even if it's an emergency access point for the backside?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Medina, yes, uh, so while we've talked about that in discussion, that has not been part of the, the plan for the facility. But absolutely, we can start researching and seeing what properties are adjacent to that. And if there's a connector on the backside or there's a way to acquire property or whatever that looks like. I, I don't know, but I'm happy to, to invest some time in that and look at that for us and at least do as much of that in-house as we can and make a report back to you and let you know what that looks like.
I just thought maybe from a standpoint of an easement or something back there, I mean, we put power poles and gas lines and everything in there. There's gotta be some type of easement back there that could be used where we could lock the gate and give access to, to the fire chiefs, the EMS departments, police, things like that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, that's, that's absolutely a great thing. Um, as far as insurance goes and things like that, I don't know if something like that would have to remain open twenty-four seven or if a locked gate satisfies insurance types things. Uh, to consider that one way in, one way out and, and now it's wide open. So that's another thing that we can do to, to research and try to better educate ourselves.
Thank you. Thanks, I appreciate it. That's it, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
It's a nice sign. It's cool. Good work.
Is that the entrance to the baseball field or is that the?
Should be for the, yeah.
Did we ever pick a name? We're not gonna pick a name?
Hila Valley Park?
Hila Valley, that's it. That's, I was expecting something like big and elaborate and a big cowboy with a big hat carrying a baseball bat or something. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Don't forget the lights around it, okay, please. Thank you.
Um, moving on to our road department, Mr. Rocco.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, um, just wanted to go over the things that we've been doing uh this last month or so that, uh, you know, the truck drivers, we've got truck drivers delivering material to our projects. We've completed the chip sealing for CAP twenty-five. We're still installing some covenants on Flurry. Other than that, it's, it's physically done. Um, all the school bus routes in twenty-twenty-five, the chip sealing is complete. Um, we've been replying the roads for rain events. It's an ongoing task. Um, we're gaining on our maintenance of the roads and you can see the complaint list, complaint list getting smaller and smaller. Uh, we start with the, working on the worst affected roads as our priority and we work out from there. Moving forward with the rest of the projects, we've, we were able to start our special projects uh this, this, this week. We also are still uh addressing complaints. And I just reminded everybody in the community to be patient um regarding road maintenance and our routine blading. I've got some more I wanna go over with you here after this little presentation. We've also been training a lot of employees to get our CDLs, training the drive trucks, also training them on equipment. Um, it takes a little bit of time, you know, you can't take somebody who's a, who's never been on a fishing permit before and turning them into a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar machine to blade a road because they'll tear up more than they fix. But uh if you'll go ahead and go to the next slide, I'll kinda show up. This is some of the chip sealing we've done um on, on the roads for this CAP twenty-five project. I just got a few pictures of the, of the road base we have there and the, and the uh dump truck spreading the base course. I'm gonna go to the next one. Um, this was uh placing the oil and doing the absolute chip seal. We actually put uh two coats. We put a, uh, what they call a primer coat on the bottom, sealed it, sealed that road. And the next day we were able to come back with the, with the chip seal oil and, and put another layer on there. That, that road should be in good shape for the next five to seven years. We've also done a lot of extensive uh, uh, water uh control on this, on this road. We can go to the next one. That's, that's pretty much what we started with there and then this is we're finishing up rolling on that, on Flurry Road as well. Um, I just wanted to give you an example of some of the erosion that we're dealing with when these rains hit. We've been thankful not to have any rain. I mean, well, I didn't wanna say that. We're always grateful for the rain we get. But uh, just to give you an example, this, this particular one in Sept-, in uh July and September, this particular road is washed out four times. It takes two hours to transport a blade over there to fix this or a load or whatever we can. And then, of course, when we finish, I try to keep blade there and do all the roads that are there while we're there. But like I said, it's, it takes an extensive amount of time to, when we have something like this, there's no access. To me, this is a priority because that, there's obviously no emergency vehicles can get in. Now there's some people can't even get to their homes. Go ahead and go to the next one. Uh, this is after our road repair. I just wanted to brag on our Dover operator, on our blade operators a little bit. He's relatively new, uh, the guy's been taking care of this for us and he's doing, he's doing a really good job. I think he's at the end of it. We got one more. I think that's the end of it. One thing I did wanna bring up is that uh, you know, I've been here for six months now. When I walked in the, in the office over there the first day I was there, I had five people besides Sean, he's our, he's our supervisor. Um, we had eight people total, some were out on leave, but it was quite a shock to walk in there and only see that many people. We went, we were able to hire two blade operators. We also promoted one. I've got five now. We hired two more labors to help us out because as we move, move up, it leaves a void at the bottom. We were able to get uh three guys trained up, got their, obtain their CDLs. That helped us immensely. One of them was an operator. The other two are now truck drivers. Like I said, we promoted two of our uh, promoted two labors up to truck drivers. We've got our truck driver plates full now. But uh that's some of the things that we've been dealing with you know, as, as we've been doing this, these projects. We've been able to do what, when I started six months ago. Uh, we still have the, the, the CAP twenty-four, school bus routes and the special project for twenty-twenty-four to finish. And this crew was able to get together and uh we have an amazing crew and they were able to finish all that. And then once we finished that, we started on the twenty-twenty-five projects. We've completed all that with the exception of the special projects. Um, we've got two water crossings that we're working on right now. Hopefully we can finish them before the end of the year. It's gonna be real close. But that's some of the things we've been up against. In the meantime, like I say, the erosion when the rains, July and September hit us pretty hard. We might not have got all the raid we wanted. There was a few spots that got it all at once. And uh some of those spots are, like I say, Con- Connor Road, we've battled four times. Uh, there in, around Cliff along Duck Creek. We've been out there uh three or four times cleaning, three times that I had logged in my book that I was able to find that we cleaned it. When the blade operator is there doing routine maintenance, he cleans that area also. Um, but we've been there three different times when the, when the roads got washed out and they were closed. We had to mobilize equipment in there. That's just not something we can do in ten minutes. I just want everybody to realize how long it takes to mobilize equipment, get an operator there. And of course, there's also days when that equipment has to go down for a PM. The blade in uh Cliff was due for a preventative maintenance yesterday. It took six hours for Caterpillar to come and do that. I had to put that operator in a different spot, but we lost a day of blading out there. Just, just as an example, I picked uh what we call District Two on our map. And I started on September fifteenth because that was after we finished some of our chip sealing. The, before that, the two or three weeks before that, we've been getting these roads ready to chip seal on the shoulders. And uh I just needed all hands on deck. I've, I've got thirteen total now, which is making an immense difference. On Sep-, Sep-, on September fifteenth, um, we were doing the, the Hila Road and the, the uh Duck Creek crossings. Um, then, then we chip sealed the rest of that week. From October uh first and second, our, our blade bladed the Moon Ranch Road. From the seventh to the ninth, he bladed the Sacatoon Road. And then that weekend it rained again. And that, after that weekend, I went and drove that road again. The road's pretty good, but the crossings are rough again. We're gonna have to go back and blade it again. Um, we've been fighting that a lot through the months of uh, of October, uh, September and October. Um, the thirteenth through the sixteenth, I had a blade up there on the Y-six Road. That's part of our county road. The twentieth through the twenty-second, uh, we had a blade on Hooker Loop. That road was in dire need of a lot of attention. They had put a fiber optic uh in there also. We've been working around them to, to get that road in place. Also, on the twenty-seventh, we finished up Hooker, Hooker Loop. Um, the twenty-ninth, I had, I pulled all my guys in because we had to chip seal Flurry. And then on thirtieth, he also worked on Hooker Loop. That's a month and a half right there and that's only three or four roads. On November third, we finished uh, finished up Hooker Loop. We moved to Buckhorn. As of last week, he was able to get uh some of the Buckhorn roads or the Duck Creek Road around the back. They're also putting fiber optic cable in there. We're working around that. Um, we got Christian Center and some of the surrounding roads around Duck Creek. But uh, you know, I've heard everybody say that, yeah, we, we, we can do four miles in a day if it's really good and everything's perfect. I've got a guy working up on Royal John Mine Road right now. It, one day he only did a mile and a half. That's so much rock and it's so rough and to get it passable, it is so very flexible. Um, I understand at the last meeting that you guys were asking for a schedule. And if it's, you know, and I'm gonna put this all on me. To me, we can't have a set schedule because I never know from one day to the next how long it's gonna take. He's been on that Royal John Route, Mine Road now going almost on two weeks. There's about fifteen, sixteen miles of road there. And when you're only getting one or two miles a day, that's a pretty tough blading. It's hard on your equipment. Um, anyway, I just wanted to, I just wanted everybody to understand what we're up against. We get on a road like Sacatoon, you get up on the top of Sacatoon, yeah, you can blade four miles a day. But uh if you get on, on some of these other roads, you can't just hook or loop. I didn't think it was that bad of a road, for instance. But it took us a week and a half to blade that. There's a lot of people, a lot of these roads also, when we decide that we're gonna go blade this road, uh, we take into consideration how much traffic's traveling on that road. We can, have to take into consideration the type of material that's on that road. We can't just haul material to every road in the county. It's, that's just not possible. I mean, a little at a time, in a few years it may be, but we can't just go do it as a routine maintenance. So I'm thinking uh at the fastest pace we can go, we could probably make a round in a district. Depending on the district, some people, District Two, I think, has a hundred and twenty-three miles. Um, only ten of those are paved. So there's quite a bit of, of dirt road there. Um, some of the roads that we have, um, Turkey Creek Road and there's a road, I can't remember the name of it right off of Ellis Mesa up here. It's a very difficult road to blade. It's narrow, it's uh rocky. And you're not gonna make, you might make a mile a day on that road. You may not. Cause so, you know, if you meet somebody, you have to back all the way to the top. I mean, that's just how narrow it, that's some of the challenges that we face. Typically, what we do as far as the schedule is if we don't have any fires to put out as far as washouts and erosion, um, we start at one side of the district. We have a list. I've got it right here. And we try to start at one of the districts and work our way through that district. By the time they finish the district, they'll go back and start over. And uh, I mean, that hasn't happened since I've been here in the last six months because we always have to move the equipment to go uh take care of an emergency situation. By that, I mean like the pictures I showed you, that it's uh people, it's inaccessible or it's getting really rough for the emergency vehicles and things like that. That, that, to me, that's priority. If, if I need to be corrected on that, I'm open to suggestions. But uh, that's, that's what we're facing. There's some of these roads that I get complaints on and I go drive them. And I think I've told you before, and I'm in a really nice Saffron pickup. It's not like my personal truck. But if I can drive twenty-five, thirty miles an hour down that road, to me, that's not an emergency. Now, if there's a few rough spots, you gotta slow down and cross easy. I understand that. We'll try to get some of the air as soon as we can. That's what, that's what I prioritize. And uh, you know, if, if you've got some suggestions or things you want me to try or other information, I'd be glad to get with you. I'm open to, if one of you guys wanna go for a ride and I can show you your district. I think I've mentioned that to Sharnine. I've made, I don't know if I should have mentioned that in this meeting or not, but um, I, I'm not opposed to doing that. I'd be glad to go show you any part of the district you wanna go look at. I think that's all I have on the, on the blading and stuff. I just wanted to give you an update on Ridge Road. They did start milling yesterday on that project that Joseph talked about. And uh they're also milling this morning. They've got their, their uh, all their signs and the road construction up. I mean, all their traffic control up. There is a detour there. I'm not sure who's the commissioner for Ridge Road, but anyway, that, there is gonna be a, okay? Anyway, that's gonna, there's gonna be a uh detour there for a while uh coming north on that road. So just, you know, if anybody calls, that's why they're, they're starting to mill that. There will be, I think, going southbound. It's open for right now. And the northbound, you have to take a detour down uh Bonita and come up. So, um, I'm open. That's, that's really all I have. If I'm open to any questions you guys might have or any suggestions.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
I just wanna thank you for the information and report. I know that um based on your last six months and your report, you've been very busy. And when I get constituents uh contacting me about road complaints, I, I know that you and our county manager um have been quick to go investigate and drive those roads. And I really appreciate that. And it makes sense that you have to deal with emergency conditions so that people can access their homes. And you have to deal with special projects because we're required to spend that funding within the timeframe. Um, so, and, and your strategy of working your way from one side of the district to the other, that all makes great sense. I'm just trying to think outside of the box about how we might be able to communicate to the public in an efficient way to where you don't have to repeat yourself all the time and to where we're not always having to tell everyone the same story. Um, and, and I'm just throwing this out there as food for thought that maybe there's a way that we could use IT to say like, you know, we, all of us now, wherever you go, you get those little notifications. Like your complaint has been received. It has been given a priority level of two. You know, you can expect a response within three months or whatever. Like, I, I'm just throwing that out there as, as a, an idea to communicate with constituents to where the, I think half the time people just wanna know that their complaint has been heard. And, and I always tell people like, I've received your complaint. I will pass it along, you know, to our county manager. And sometimes that's enough to satisfy people that like, okay, someone heard me. But sometimes people get impatient and they want, they want more. So if anyone has any great ideas about how we could facilitate that communication and not have to um just repeat yourself all the time, I think that'd be good. But thank you for your work.
I actually talked to a painter, I believe.
I can speak to that.
I'm sorry?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, excellent thought, without a doubt. And that is something that's in the works. So that's something that we're currently working on at the moment as far as a presence that allows uh those within the county to be able to express uh concerns along these lines. So it's preliminary, but we're, we're starting it now.
I'll just tell you what it is. It's um, we're capitalizing on what Connie's been using, uh, the TextMyGov. And it can be utilized for um road department code enforcement, emergency management. Has a number of functions um where we can communicate with the public and vice versa. Um, also gives us a mechanism to track um when the complaint was submitted. Um, and so we know that we have a, a large educational curve that we're gonna have to um to, to um deal with. But um, you know, we've been trying to find a way to make sure that we give your constituents um an avenue to, you know, make those um, to put us on notice that, you know, we need this, this done. And then when you're asking for reports and you're asking for logs, then we have um, we have a platform to where it'll be a little bit easier than, you know, we, we have their daily logs. And, you know, I, I sent Commissioner Flores all of them because that's all I have at this point. So um, we're, we're working diligently to try to, to make this a better system, not only for our department heads and directors, but for you as well.
Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, Mr. Rocco, appreciate your uh, your comments. And it, it was me asking for the paperwork because I'm the one getting, I think, a lot of the calls in my district. And I obviously have to give them an answer instead of saying, I don't know, we're gonna get back to you or be patient. It'll get there. And I, I do appreciate the logs. I just need some sort of documentation. And, and what you talked about earlier is this is on my this, this is on my this. That, that'd be perfect. I, I would love to have that and say, hey, this is done, this is done. They're doing chip sealing. You are, you are gonna get some service at some time because I understand, trust me. I, I know those roads because I used to patrol that area. And um, I know it takes six hours. I know it takes. I know it takes a lot of equipment and manpower to get out there. At the end, though, these are still county maintained roads and these folks pay taxes and then they're part of our, our constituents. And they deserve the same service in the county as people that live close to the city. I, I just needed some sort of, whether I called it a schedule, whether I called it a list, a log, I need something in front of me where I can look at and say, no, your road was done. Six months ago, there's a blader in the Buckhorn area as we speak. It's getting there, and I appreciate the logs. I, just anything in front of me, instead of me continuing saying, let me get back to you. Let me make a call, let me send an email, let me get back to you. It, it's like, I, I wish I would get calls and say, hey, this roadwork was done and thank you and I appreciate it. But we chose to be up here to answer for our constituents. And I had a complaint that there was some maintenance done on Rodeo Road off of Rosedale. And the road was, the, the work was done well except for the fact that the manhole cover, um, wasn't tapered. So it's protruding from the middle of the roadway. And that, cause, can cause a safety concern. I haven't been out there to look at it. I'm just telling you what I was told.
Just, sir, the last two days, we've been hauling twenty loads of material out there on Rodeo Road the last two days.
Maybe, maybe you can look into that manhole cover somewhere.
Yeah, I think they've put material on that road, it was before I got here, but the water drainage is such that it washes a lot of that material away. And so I, it's gonna be an ongoing project over the years.
For many of our roads, it's an ongoing project. And I, I, I appreciate the, the Connor Road there in, um, in Red Rock. I, I get complaints from there as well. I know it's a long way to Red Rock. I, I, I've been there. And, um, but again, they're still part of the county. I, I don't wanna be up here and, and be a thorn in your side or, or Charlene's side. I'm just trying to get answers because I'm reminded at times, and I don't mind it, hey, you said you would look out for us when you ran. So they're holding me to what I said, and I'm trying to respond back with an answer besides, I don't know. I, I know you mentioned Duck Creek Road, you mentioned Hooker Loop, and I'm glad to hear that because I was on my list of roads. Can you, maybe let me know if you know? When was the last time Black Mountain Road was, was maintenanceed?
That was when we've been several times that, um, we've had a blade up there around the McCully Road area and that Bald, I think it's called Bald Knoll Road.
Yes.
And I believe it was, it was maintained, I believe it was a couple of months ago. It's been up there.
Okay.
And we do have, once he gets down, uh, with the Buckhorn, he's actually gonna go down by the Airport Mesa Road. And there's a couple of roads right in there he's gotta take care of. And then he's gonna head back over to McCully and Bald Knoll and that Black Mountain Road.
Thank you. I, I truly, I truly appreciate that. And I hope the folks that have called me and told them to please listen in on this meeting, that I would address this, I hope they can hear me and, and they know that there is something being done. You are looking at the complaints, uh, Charlene. I thank you for the paperwork you sent me. I'm, I'm glad just to have something in front of me for future calls. And if you could just look at the, that issue on Rodeo Road, I would greatly appreciate that.
Okay.
At the end of the day, please thank all your crew. I know you're shorthanded. I know it takes a long time to get a CDL. I, I understand that, and I will pass that along to my constituents. But, um, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Anything else, Commissioners? You know, one thing, uh, you know, I guess I understand we've caught up on 2024, correct? Yeah, we appreciate that too on a good note, so we appreciate you doing that. And we'll go from there. Thanks. Okay, is that all the, the reports? Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, which is gonna have the Grand County Board of Commissioners meetings for ten seven work session, ten nine regular meeting, ten twenty-three regular meeting, expenditure report ending in ten thirty-one, indigenous and community health care's claim, and, uh, asset deletion and donation for, uh, the 2016 Ford Transit High Roof.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. So a motion by Commissioner Stevens, I have a second by Commissioner Medina. I just have a couple of question, well, not a couple of questions, a comment because people's, public will sit up here and say, uh, you know, I keep going on, on, uh, our detention center. But if you really look at our expenditure report from ten two to ten thirty-one, we look at inmate health September detention center, ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. You go, uh, further down, feeding of inmates, thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Uh, juvenile housing, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. So this is why I pretty well bring this stuff up. There's a lot of it. Uh, one question that I do have, I see an expenditure here for thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's, uh, for Genesis body worn camera services. Is that for our deputies, Sheriff? The Genesis body worn cameras, is that for our deputies?
We don't have the Genesis, we have LensLock. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the, our deputies are wearing LensLock body cams. Um, so I don't know where Genesis would have come in for.
But, okay, well, you know, thirty-six thousand for that, do you? Anyway, do we have a policy as far as the, the cameras and the body cameras for our deputies?
Yes, sir, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on this? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to new business. November fourth, 2025, regular local election canvas. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, election canvas.
Second.
So now a motion, uh, second by Commissioner, uh, Stevens. Do we have any discussion? Do you have anything, uh, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, I just wanna thank everybody that participated in our election. I wanna thank our poll workers, my staff. It's pretty much about all. It was a good election.
No, and thank you and your staff for, for everything. Nowadays, elections aren't, uh, easy to run, so I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good comment.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, so the people out in there, the, your poll workers, they, they were really, they, they were amazing. I, I just wanna, you know, if you could just, I, I didn't know their names. I know Ms. Samodoro's out there, but there were some individuals out there that were just greeting the public. They were talking about you, they were talking about your office and stuff like that. Just reach out to them and tell them thank you because they were really, they did a really good job out there with the people. The people were happy, they were laughing and stuff, so just tell them thank you.
Thank you. All those, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. County Manager, did you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to clarify your question on the thirty-six thousand dollar. So Genesis is the model of the camera, and so it is for LensLock. So, um, we need to fix this spreadsheet to where the lines align a little bit better. So it was, the thirty-six thousand, four fifty-nine was to LensLock.
LensLock, okay, thank you. Thanks. Moving on to, uh, new business, or we are in new business. Uh, moving on to item J, courthouse renovation, new construction. Mr. Holgi.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. During our October meeting, uh, we presented the courthouse project. Uh, we had, we identified two strategies, uh, to research. One of them was the renovation of the existing courthouse facility. And the second was the construction of a new judicial campus. We were given, uh, estimates at that fifty percent design development stage. And for the renovation, it was about nineteen point nine million and, uh, thirty-five point three million for the construction of that new facility. So these numbers only included construction costs and they were not all inclusive. So that just prompted some further discussion in that last meeting. Um, so our architects assembled a, a master budget spreadsheet. And so now we're looking at if, including architectural fees, some FFNE components of it, so furniture, fixtures and equipment, um, we would approximately need to budget twenty-four point three million for the renovation and thirty-nine point seven million for the new construction. So, uh, Honorable Judge Hofaket's, uh, here. Um, we have our architect on the line, and so we just wanted to be able to put this material, put it in front of you and, uh, and continue that discussion. No stamp for any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I would also add, Andrea, Joseph and I met with Mark Valenzuela yesterday. Um, I had reached out to him to start working on some preliminary, um, numbers as to how to go about paying for something like this. And, um, he was not available today, but he will be making a presentation on, uh, potential funding, um, at your December meeting. My other concern, and, and I don't know if Judge Hofaket can, I know I, I asked him this last time, but, um, I was at a managers meeting last week and we, we talked about courthouse funding. And it appears that only twenty million dollars has been funded for twenty-seven through twenty-nine. That's twenty million dollars statewide. So I'm not overly optimistic that we're going to get a large amount of money from the state to help us with this. So that's something as, as you deliberate on this, um, you know, we're gonna be looking at bonding this one way or the other.
So, you know, what I'm looking at is, is somewhere, some, somewhere along this road, we're gonna have to look at going after the fund. But, and, and I don't know how the, my fellow Commissioners feel, but what I'm, I'm gonna do is I'm gonna throw a, a motion in here that, make a motion to approve new construction contingent on funding being available. If the funding does not become available on that, then we go back to the drawing board and look at other options. But I think we need to actually, my opinion is we really need to start somewhere and start looking at this funding and seeing if we can get the funding for the new construction. I think with this motion, and I guess my motion's continuing, sorry, Madam Clerk, but, um, I think that somehow we have to lock ourselves down somewhere along this process to start going, looking at the new construction. And if funds aren't available, it's contingent, my motion, we come back to the drawing board. But for right now, I think we can give the direction to our county manager and also to our, uh, um, to our Capitol, uh, director to, to start going in, in one direction. So that's my motion, if you got it.
Second.
So now I have a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any, uh, um, further discussion?
Quick question.
Commissioner Medina.
This manager, when this brought, was brought to the table, I thought there was a discussion where the New Mexico Judicial people were gonna put fifty percent. And was that fifty percent of the whole project? Was that, what, was it? And I understand after further discussions, they were allotted twenty million for the whole state. That was not told in the very beginning. That was told we'd be covering fifty percent, they'd be covering this. Are we gonna have some help with this?
So, um, the fifty percent, so we obtained, we applied for, um, that, that's how that, that funding is set up is fifty percent is on the local, fifty percent comes from AOC. We received fifty percent for the DB, for, um, the fifty percent DB for both of these projects so that it would help you to be able to, to come to a decision. Um, that has not changed, um, it's my understanding. We still have to have our fifty percent skin in the game. But unless that funding level changes, what I was told last week is there's twenty million dollars authorized for fiscal year twenty-seven through fiscal year twenty-nine, and that is twenty million dollars total. I'm, I've already reached out to our delegation to please ask them as they go into the session, like, please add some money to that, and, and I, I want to be able to show them the numbers that we're up against. Um, but that's my understanding that that's how that is working as of today. But the judge can probably correct me where I'm skewed.
Is this on? Did I just turn it off or is it on? Now it's on, sorry. Uh, yeah, so the initial, uh, I think there's a couple of legislative sessions ago, they, they initially put a twenty million dollar pot, pot in there for the first time in the history of the state, uh, to partner with counties on courthouse improvement. And one new build, and that was in Almagordo, which is a significant chunk of that twenty million. And we, they have not, they put another ten million in the following year and they have not put more money in. Uh, the last legislative session, I think there was some concern that the entire amount had not yet been spent. Uh, but we are planning to, uh, the judiciary as a whole and specifically our district, uh, is planning to push really hard for a match with these numbers, uh, that, uh, the, uh, the hope is to get a, a fifty percent match, up to fifty percent, which is what it has always been, which is ha- half of the architectural plans was, was paid for, uh, with that match. And to be clear, that thirty million has been depleted. We, it does need to be, uh, re, re-upped by the legislature, and that's what we will push for, uh, this session.
You know, and I think, thank you, Judge, appreciate it. But, you know, I think that for me, putting this motion up here is more of a type of commitment from Grant County and the Board of Commissioners to go ahead and, and pursue that. What I don't want to do is get up to Santa Fe or anywhere or any of these legislative committees or anything and say, for them to have the excuse, well, you guys haven't committed to anything. Well, yes, we have committed to something, now we're looking for your help to do this. And this motion's pretty open to, okay, if it can happen, then at the end of the day, it leaves it open for us to come back to the drawing board. That's why I made that motion, and I appreciate your second. Commissioner Stevens?
Um, so I, I thought a lot about the, the two options, and I really appreciate the breakdown with the financial cost and more clarity there. And I understand why we would want new construction because you can put things where you want it, basically, right? You can design it exactly like you want for security and the different rooms. And we heard from, um, from judges and, and people advocating for that. Um, however, I've been contacted by several constituents who are in support of the renovation option. And, um, personally, I like the renovation option because we all talked about how important this historic courthouse is to our community. And I think, um, sentimentally, the best way to show that you appreciate or value a building is to put TLC into it. You know, if we build a new, uh, building, we said that the existing courthouse is not in bad shape, but the priority then becomes on the new building. And that existing courthouse will sit there, uh, neglected. So I just really think it's worth putting, um, the money into the existing courthouse to bring it up to speed and, and show that we value that. And, and I also just really don't like empty buildings sitting around. So we already have that detention center, um, which is an eyesore and needs to come down. And I, I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't mean to cause a wrench in the motion, but I, I like the renovation option.
No, that's fine, I appreciate that, County Manager.
Stevens, one of the things that we've, um, discussed, um, along those lines, and this was an internal conversation, you know, the DA's office is out of space, um, so the courthouse, the current courthouse would not sit empty. We could also move magistrate court in there where they could utilize, um, the larger courtrooms, have more space. We have an opportunity, the way that magistrate court is set up, um, we receive lease payments from them. Um, it's based on square footage. Perhaps we could expand on that, generate a little bit of money off of mag court, um, if that's still an option. But, um, I believe that there is a use for the building as part of, um, looking at it as a judicial campus, um, rather than it sitting empty. So just if that eases your mind a little bit and your constituents, um, you know, the DA's definitely out of space. And I think we could, you know, perhaps use the two main floors and shut off that ugly old jail, um, bur, and not utilize that, but just food for thought.
You know, part of me too is, is I look at the DA's office and you go in there and, uh, yeah, it's dark, dingy, ugly, and, you know, you have a lot of victims that need to go up there and, and talk to our attorneys. And I just, you know, the, when I went up there with our DA and looked around and, and took a tour with him, it, it just, they, they need to move somewhere else also, so that's part of it. But anyway, uh, any further discussion?
Um, hey, Judge, quick question. So is there a, a ranking system? Is there a priority list? You talked about Almagordo getting the bigger piece of the pie for the new build. Chairman Ponce, or, um, advised it that we are, you know, the motion's out for a new structure. Does that give us a higher priority setting for a bigger chunk of the money or what happens there?
Uh, Chair and Commissioners, I believe it does. I believe the, the Supreme Court has supported this. this project. They've supported me in pushing for this project, and I believe that if somebody's looking to upgrade their windows, or to, you know, redo their floors, that the matching fund is available for that. But for new builds, particularly their push for years, continuing today is security, and how this will address security, it will make it, I would believe, one of the highest, if not the highest, priority for the funds.
But also, if there is a list, if there's some criteria that needs to be followed, can you get us that, so we can actually have some idea of what kind of support you're gonna need from us to make this happen?
Absolutely, I can.
Please. And thank you for your time. Unless you're here every time, this is on the agenda. I appreciate your time, making the trip up. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Sheldon?
I have a couple of questions, so, related. Does our, it, I'm getting the impression that our county manager and our county planner recommend that for all the reasons we've heard, security, that we go with the new build? Or are you not stating a recommendation to the commission?
I'm not going to commit one way or the other. I, I believe it makes more sense for a new build. I've been through a courthouse, my, very minor renovation project, and, you know, a $400,000 project turned into three times that, more than that. So I understand the challenges, the other challenges of what do you do with the courts whenever they're remodeling that building? What do we do with them? What's the cost of that? They still have to continue working. That's another challenge. It does make more sense. I'm not gonna say I put it in the form of a recommendation, because I'm a little apprehensive of $40 million and, and where, where that comes from. But to me, it makes logical sense to, to go that route.
Thank you. And then, when you said that it's pretty obvious, given the current funding from the legislature for projects, to contribute to projects like this that were facing a bond, does that mean we would be putting this out for a vote on a bond issue?
So that will be your presentation in December. And if this motion passes, that'll, that'll make that presentation much simpler, is this is what we're looking at. There's different options. There's geo-bonds, which do go to the voters, very similar to what our, how our geo-bonds are done. It's an election. There is also GRT. You know, that's another option to look at, a combination of all of those. So Mr. Valenzuela, our financial advisor, will be presenting that to you in December. And you can take a look at different scenarios that he has. What we talked through yesterday is, you know, we got 25% of the project from the state. What does it look like? How does it look like if you use, you know, property taxes, your funding stream, or GRT as your funding stream? I will tell you where I stand today. I don't want to use GRT, because that's how we're doing some of the things we're doing, and how we're finally getting ahead with a lot of things that have been mandated year over year over year. So just a lot for you to, to understand, and you'll have to make, that will be your next big decision, is how do you move forward with funding that. And, you know, we just need to collectively work very hard as a county, along with Judge Hofaket's support, our legislature's support, and try every which way we can to make sure that we maximize the funding that's there.
Also, remember the motion is contingent on funds. It's not knocking us into anything. So, but I think we need to put this to, like I said, let's move forward. Let's see what we can do. Now we come back to the drawing board.
And then, I guess the other elephant in the room, related to motions and, and decisions like this, even if their contingent is, I think we're likely to hear a proposal in like February or March for the hospital. And, and then we've sort of been grappling with where we go, how, how we go in forward on mental, you know, sort of a replacement strategy for where we've been on, on drug abuse and mental health issues. And so those are out there. We're probably, this one's ahead as far as being able to look at options. I, I totally agree, especially for the security of families and, and inmates, or, that we, the best option from, that we saw from the architecture for providing better security was the new build option. And I think I heard Judge Hofaket state, state that was their, their view as well from the last presentation. So, and I get that. And I appreciate the contingent motion to sort of get us in the, in the mode. It's just that everything's unclear when you have other priorities out there too, that we're all gonna be facing. So.
And I think one of the biggest deciding factors for me is, under state statute, we're required to do certain things for our courthouse, for our courts. So that could, at the end of the day, could cost us a lot more money if we don't do what we need to do. You know, to where as a hospital, I understand we're gonna need it. You know, we've talked about, you know, eventually putting money into the hospital and putting Band-Aid after Band-Aid at the end, we're gonna end up paying the price for a new hospital. You know, I see that. I see behavioral health. I think behavioral health right now has a lot of push behind it, so I think that's gonna be a lot easier to get through and to deal with eventually. But for right now, I think, let's just see where this takes us on the contingent. I mean, that's my opinion. But anything else, Commissioner?
That's all for me. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Flotus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was gonna make similar comments as my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Shelley. It, it is a, a big decision because of the hospital, and I understand the, the state mandates, Mr. Chair, that, you know, we could be in the risk of losing or getting in trouble for not fulfilling those. But I, I think, I, I do appreciate the contingent upon funding. But I think at the same time, we, this commission just happens to be at, at this time and place, because it's, I guess, been a long time overdue with the courthouse, with the hospital. You said it yourself, Mr. Chair, we've been putting Band-Aid upon Band-Aid to the hospital. And, and that's a big factor here for folks that live in here in Grant County and surrounding counties, is the hospital, but also the courthouse. Like you, I grew up, you know, sitting on that grass and running courthouse, and I don't want to see that, that courthouse be, be abandoned or neglected. And, yeah, I definitely think it's something for the citizens to, to vote on if it comes to that point. But I, I agree with you, is that if we do go to Santa Fe and ask for, for funding, it's very easy for them to say, wait a minute, this county over here has committed to this, we're gonna give it to them. When you guys make a decision, come back next year, and let us know you have committed, and we'll address that concern, at least now. Again, I'm reiterating everything you folks have said, but I just want to be on record to show my, my sentiments are very much the same, and I'm thinking about both big construction projects that we have to decide on very quick. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Madam Clerk, go ahead and give me a roll call vote, please, please.
Commissioners, you will be voting on the courthouse, Chairman Ponce, contingent on the funding. Eloy Medina seconded. Chairman Ponce?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
No.
Commissioner Flotus?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, the door control upgrade from APIC solution poll. I'm sort of tuning this sort of like a work session type.
This is, the, Joseph spoke about this in his report. This is the control upgrade, and this is budgeted. It's in the amount of $93,379.10. And this is replacing, it's upgrading that system. Currently, we have proprietary software. Now APIC is able to take that over. APIC runs all of our other systems. And so we are asking for your approval to move forward with this. It's in the budget, just outside of my authority, so, it's in front of you.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Seven motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to resolution, Resolution R. 25-63, 2026, New Mexico County's legislative priority.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, each year, we are asked, as a county, to support the legislative priorities that the New Mexico County's Board sets usually in August, I guess, somewhere in that frame, in the summer. And this year, those priorities are mainly centered around House Bill 2 appropriations, looking at fully funding the detention reimbursement fund, which we talk about on a regular basis. This is, at most halfway funded. And so we're just asking for that to be fully funded, to where we are paid for the actual cost of housing those state inmates. The courthouse funding, which we just discussed, that funding was authorized to be able to help counties meet that statutory obligation that the chairman just mentioned. Also, continued funding for operational costs of 700 megahertz radios. The detention recruitment and retention, we talked about that. Just asking for continued funding to help with that workforce in the detention centers, same as the firefighter EMS recruitment fund. And then also to continue funding for the RISE programs in our detention centers. Outside of the HB2 appropriations, IPR improvements, last year, we were successful with a piece of that, and so we're just trying to chip away from, chip away at that. It's, it's becoming more and more burdensome. Many counties are hiring multiple staff just to be able to deal with the number of IPR requests. We have an employee who works part-time on it in the Sheriff's Department, as well as in our office, so for the most part, equivalent of one FTE. Bry told me the other day that we were at 300 and something IPR requests through August. I think we had 20-something last year, so that gives you an idea of the number. They're continuing to be more aggressive with what they're asking for, and so we have to make sure that we comply with that law. So the attorneys and also a, a group of managers have been looking at that, continue to revise that act. And then lastly, the property tax exemption deadline for veterans. So we learned when that passed that there was some nuances and challenges about the timing of that, and how that would, when that exemption could be filed. And so then we would have an understanding of how that would hit our budget. So those were their priorities, and we would ask for your approval, so we can all work on this collectively, and hopefully have some success.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just with the IPR. So it sounds like people would still be able to request information, but the process has become used to obstruct, like, functioning. And it's just taking so much manpower and time away from the critical functions of government, that this would simplify it, right? That people could still get information, but I, I don't know, if you can provide like an example of what they wouldn't be able to get.
So absolutely, it would not be changing the act that, no, you can't get that. So we get hit with things like, we want your entire vendor list for the last however many years. So why would you need IPR for that? And so simplifying some of those things, some employee-related stuff, help me out here, some of the other things that, trying to make it less burdensome, but obviously, we would never take away like what you're entitled to do. It's not changing the nature of the act to that extent.
Commissioner, I can chime in a little bit on that as well. Some of the, a few different buckets that we look at. One, a lot of entities get requests from data mining entities from across the country. And that is ju, and that is a massive endeavor at times for then to have to turn around and prioritize an out-of-state company that has no bearing on our day-to-day operations. The citizens need to know what's going on within their government. And so if you drop the ball on that entity's request, then you might be liable for damages to them, even though it has no bearing on, on what citizens are trying to get here. Other examples are, there, there are convicted inmates who use IPR as a way to generate revenue for themselves. And they send massive IPR requests to every single government entity in the state. And if you miss, if one entity misses one response, then all of a sudden, that individual gets potentially $100 a day starting to accrue, and just for the sake of making some money off of it, and having that money put into his commissary. So there are different things like that, that, that we're trying to fix the hole, so that it's not a, the, the government entities are, are, yes, providing the information that the public is entitled to have, to know what its government is doing, but not to allow the weaponization of it against the entities to make money. That's never what the statute was intended to be. And then also to not make it just a data mining opportunity for entities that have no real connection with the state, or with, with what is going on for local interests.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Flotus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, I guess, question or concern is the property tax exemptions deadline for veterans. And I was gonna, this, part of my comments for commission reports, but I spoke to some, some folks about the RV issue, people living in them without the proper facilities. But it was brought to my attention that a couple of these properties, they're not paying the taxes because the, the owner of these properties at one time was a tax-exempt veteran. However, they know for a fact, it being their neighbor, that the veteran has passed away, and for, you know, a few years past. And the folks living there, this, my understanding, it's not a spouse, it's maybe a cousin, distant relative, but they're still claiming the, the tax exemption for that veteran. These people have gone to, I think, I think according to them, they've gone to the sheriff's office, they've gone to the treasurers, the assessors, every, every building that they can go to that can address this issue. And they've just been told, there's, there's nothing we can do. And I, like they said, at the end of the day, it's, you know, that's $300 to $500 a year, but, you know, you accumulate that over a year, and they're, they're not sort of, they're abusing, I think, the benefit for the veterans, because this is something definitely that veterans deserve and have earned. But if there's folks that are, that are using this because of other veterans that have passed away, I, I don't know what the recourse is for these folks. And if there's any options, or anywhere they can send them, I'd be looking, I'd be happy to hear their options. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Only one comment for me, or, or discussion item on this, is I, I support everything on here. I'm, I, I'm just disappointed that one of our biggest issues that is causing us additional liabilities is tort reform, and it never makes it on the list because it's a hard tort reform and it never makes it on the list because it's a hard issue to get through certain counties. And this has to be sort of a united thing that the association of counties can, can get behind. And so it seems like there's some things that all counties are probably being hammered with that aren't on here. But I do think these, this list is well thought out and, and valuable to our county.
Brett? I agree. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to resolution R dash twenty-five dash sixty-six. Mr. Holgi?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. R twenty-five sixty-six is Colonia's funding to continue and complete road improvement projects on Arenas Valley Road. We're already working on the first half of this project. This funding will allow us to address the second half of the project and take it to completion. The overall budget for this is six point six million. The county's match is six hundred and sixty thousand. And Colonia's contribution is five million, nine hundred and forty thousand. This will be for road widening, some dr, some significant drainage structure removals and replacements that are needed in that area. And I ask for your support to while this is moving forward.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to resolution R dash twenty-five dash six-five, it's a budget adjustment. Mr. Montoya?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Both of the grants on the bar before you are for the sheriff's office. They received a ten thousand dollar HIDA award for overtime of one of their officers. And from New Mexico Department of Public Safety, a retention grant of twelve thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-one cents. No stand for any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Stevens, do you have a report?
I just wanted to report on a couple of meetings I've attended. Let's see. One was with United Way. It was a training about ALIS, which New Mexico has joined. This ALIS movement. There's over thirty states now that are, are using this as data and policymaking information. ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed. And here in Grant County, we have thirty-six percent of households who meet that criteria. So what that means is they don't meet the poverty level as defined by the federal poverty level, but they don't have enough money to make ends meet. So they're struggling to meet all the household budget items. So here in Grant County, we have twenty percent of households who do meet that poverty level. And then thirty-six who are at the ALIS level. And I just think that's really eye-opening for us, that that's over half of our population who are really struggling. So as we, you know, as we create policies or initiatives to help the community, I think we just have to keep in mind that, that that's our demographics. And they're also, United Way is working hard to, on the legislative side, to try and enact policies that will make it easier for households to, to make it. As one example is the universal childcare is expected to help a lot and to reduce that level for families that have young kids that they're paying for childcare right now. So that was, that was interesting. And then last night, I went to the wildfire preparedness and insurance meeting. And it was informative. There's a lot of things we can do to reduce risk. The public can find some good resources, checklist about how to protect their homes. And then the Consumer Assistance Bureau online is, is a great resource for any questions about insurance related to fire. And let's see, I, I did attend that Capitol Outlay Meeting with Priscilla Lucero and also found it helpful. This coming week, we have a Southwest Solid Waste Authority meeting and meeting with the hospital trustees. And I know a couple of people have asked me about Javier Solis's position on the trustees. And my understanding is that position has not been posted and will not be until after that joint meeting. So I think that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shally?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just, I don't have anything additional really business-wise that we haven't talked about. It was a great discussion today, even though it was a little longer. But I, I really appreciated everyone's comments on the issues we've talked about. And I wanted to thank Superintendent Bracco for really coming back to us with an explanation of what he's facing and how, how they address it. I learned a lot from that. And I, and in spite of all that, all the challenges, which is probably the most common issue that we, we get, they've, they seem to, between our county manager and, and our road department, they, they seem to find ways to respond to even little detailed things that we bring to them. And I, I just appreciate what you do. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Medina?
I've got nothing at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead. Usually I go last, but I have one question for our attorney. Is it a rolling quorum if we call each other and say, don't wear this color? Because you've got two gray, two blue, and two turquoise. We're color coordinated here, but anyway.
Ben, he did call me, okay. We did this in Santa Fe.
Look.
We did this in Santa Fe.
So one of the things, and, and I don't know, maybe I just haven't paid attention. But I really want to give you guys credit for coming up to the county building. The, the sign and the lettering. It's, it looks awesome, looks professional. I don't know when it was done. I've been out of loop for a couple of weeks here. But whoever, whatever, I appreciate you guys. It looks professional, looks good. And, and thank you, guys. I really appreciate that. You know, one thing that I've been sort of getting and I've been seeing it a lot is, I think, and I would like to see our treasurer maybe give us a presentation. There's a lot of, of people questioning, calling. I don't know if it's true. I haven't looked at it. Some have said, you know, our property taxes went up to this much, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred dollars. I think that we owe it to the public, or our elected officials owe it to the public, to explain some of this in an open meeting and to get the information out there. So I don't know who can coordinate with our treasurer and ask him that, you know, see if they can put some answers out there for him. Okay, thank you. To do that. So that was the other thing, you know. And, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Shally's thing about hospital behavioral health, courthouse. I'm not throwing something else on your plate, okay? And I'm not bagging on it. I'm not badmouthing it. It was great what our governor, Lieutenant Governor, what Santa Fe did as far as free childcare. You know, I think that us as a county, we need to look at certain things because it's not going to be equal to everybody. You know, we have our daycare centers, a very few that we have have waiting lists of thirty-five, you know, forty, however many. It used to be thirty-five and maybe more for our children to get into these daycare centers. You have a lot of parents, and, and I know there's something new that came up, but I haven't really looked at it. So maybe I'm misspeaking a little bit. But you have, you know, parents or grandparents or, or people that are taking care of, of kids. And I, I think that, you know, and it's like anything else, even the county government. It's, I'm not just bagging on, on state government. But anytime that we start looking in, well, who's going to reimburse parents, grandparents for the childcare? You know, then the state has to come in and do an inspection. And the state has to approve this. Pretty soon, you're knocking down your house because it's not meeting this, meaning that's an extra cost. It's not helping. I would like to see us in, in this part of Southwest New Mexico, look at what we can do as a body to start advocating for more childcare centers in the rural community. You know, I'm a lot about equality, you know. It's great that they did that. It's great, like they did the college tuition. But I think that it's not across the board for everybody. And I'd like to see it across the board. I would not know, I do not know if grandma or grandpa or uncle, aunt, friend taking care of a kid, how they're going to get reimbursed, if, if that's even possible. But I think those are the things that we need to start looking at in, in other childcare for, to make sure that, you know, that our citizens take full advantage of that, to, to care for our kids and our working families. So that was that, on that. I think that's it for me. Commissioner Flotis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. Just a couple of days ago was, was Veterans Day. I want to say a happy belated Veterans Day to all of our active, non-active, and retired veterans. I can speak for the commission that we appreciate your service to our country. And we sometimes take the freedoms that we have for granted at times, just like sitting in this meeting. And there's been a lot of sacrifice, a couple of, we had them here just the other day. And I just want to say thank you to every veteran that has served in every conflict, not just one or two. And I, I know there's way too many for me to mention here, but from World War One to our current conflicts that we're dealing with now, Iraq and Kuwait and everything in between. Thank you. Thank you for your service. I, I really appreciate. My dad served. I didn't have the honor of serving, but my dad served. My, my oldest son and my oldest daughter also served in the military. I appreciate their service and everybody else's to our country. Also, a couple of other things, the R V issue was brought up to me. I know we addressed it in one meeting, trying to look at that Luna County ordinance. And I was trying to come up with something similar. And when I met with these folks, I just drove up their road because they were concerned. They said there are others. And I myself counted six R Vs that they seemed to be folks living in them. There was tables out front, laundry hanging from the, from the doors, from the, from the trailer hitches. And I, I just didn't see any sewage hoses coming from them. I saw extension cords going to them. And I think what's happening is that some of these folks are, are charging these people rent, but not providing the utilities. And it becomes a, a safety issue because of the human waste, the, I mean, and what the stories they tell me is not, definitely not sanitary. It definitely poses a, a health hazard to all those folks around. But just like the, the trashed yards and abandoned cars, it definitely lowers the property value of those living in that area. And these folks, I, I just see the frustration in their, in their face and their voice. I hear it in their voice. They have nowhere to turn to except to us, to come up with an ordinance, come up with some fines that really have some teeth in it to, to go and enforce the, the code enforcement. I know we probably haven't filled that. Is that correct?
It has been filled recently. It will begin on December fifth.
Great. Great. That's good news. I, I, I'd like to maybe sit and have some conversation with him, just addressing the issues that have been brought to my attention. So maybe he can, he can look at those issues. And this, not just in this particular area, it's all over the county. It's all over the county. And I, hopefully, we can do something. The other thing that concerns me is I received a call probably a couple of weeks ago that there was two wolves sighted walking across State Road two eleven. And that's the road that leads to Hila that comes off of one eighty. I also received a call this morning that the U S Fish and Wildlife released a problem wolf from up north because it kept crossing I forty. And the U S Fish and Wildlife released it down here in the Hila. And I, I think you got the same call, Tom, sometime?
I'm, I'm aware of that. And I can tell you what I was told if, if you're interested.
And I just, I think at some point in time, maybe we can coordinate a public meeting for those folks living in those areas, Hila, Cliff, Buckhorn, along with, with some folks from, from the U S Fish and Wildlife, gaming fish, just to maybe educate the folks on what to do if and when they see a wolf and how to deal with that. Should I report it? When it becomes a threat? And that way, we've taken sort of a proactive, not really proactive, but we're sort of taking care of these folks, saying, hey, this is what's going to happen. They're in this area. The wolf problem has not gone away. Just because we haven't talked about it in two, three meetings. It's still alive and well. And I, I'll try to coordinate that with you, Charlene, and, and other folks, trying to get that on, on board pretty quick. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to all the employees here in the county. I know it's hard work. I know folks are going to work during the holiday with the sheriff's department, other essential personnel. But I hope you enjoy your well-deserved short Thanksgiving break. Thank you for your service. And to the commissioners, Ben, Charlene, everybody sitting out there, all the county employees, have a great, blessed, safe, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, I forgot one thing. And I know we had some public speaking over this earlier. But the New Mexico State Transportation Commission will hold an in-person regular meeting Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at eight thirty a.m. in District One. That's in Sunland Park. So hearing our public co, uh, comment or input this morning, I'm gonna leave this with Mary Ray. She can make a copy. I think the best place is probably to go up there and public input, if they have public input, and discuss some of your problems you have with the state highway, which is thirty-five, and make your stuff known there. Because we can only help you in, in a certain, we can only help you a little bit. But at the end of the day, that is a state highway. This would probably be where you get the most bang for your money. So I'll leave this with Mary Ray. You can attend or not attend. That's up to you. But you'll be with her because we need to get into executive session. So thank you. Anyway, like to have a motion to go up to an executive session in accordance with N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one, H seven. And it's a meeting subject to attorney-client privileges.
So move.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shally. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman and Commissioners, are y'all where you're entering into executive session? Chairman Ponse?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Shally?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Flotis?
Yes.
Thank you.